I'm in my childhood home in Cosco. I know what it's like to come down the stairs and see four or five feet of water and everything that you saved and everything that meant a lot to you, as well as hot water heaters and furnaces to go. So with that said, we are working both to get people up and running right now in the short term, but also to look, take a real hard look at the various parts of town, the ones that have been flooded over and over again and the ones that, you know, just got flooded this time due to the almost nine inches in nine hours. But that still raises concerns when you see that much water. I do want to thank all of our crews that have been out since last Wednesday, police, fire, GEMS, DPW, Parks and Rec, fleet for really working hard and trying to salvage vehicles, town-owned ones that some made it, some didn't. But they really did a great job and they're still out there working. We've, we also, I also want to salute GPD and Fire Department and TAG and GEMS for the job they did over at Regal Healthcare where they rescued 46 people and transported them out that night. Forty-four had went to another facility that night, two went to the emergency room. All are okay. But even the state commented that it was done seamlessly. So we want to give them a special shout out. Right now, we're also in the process of getting a website up for people to upload their information to, for the assessments of damage. And that's to get us a number. So we want to make sure that people, the state of Connecticut and FEMA has an idea so we can meet these FEMA thresholds. As you know, I declared a state of emergency in Greenwich, the governor did in Connecticut. But I reached out to the governor this morning. We spoke via text and we're, hopefully, we're going to meet the threshold so that he can then lobby the President of the United States to declare Connecticut a disaster area. I will also be meeting with the congressman today in Pemberwick, Congressman Himes, so he can look at some of the houses that we were at all weekend to see the impact of it. Pemberwick, just to give people an idea, Pemberwick had, always gets it, but usually it's all from the river. But this was the third time that it also came down from the Weaver Street area through the woods, through Pemberwick Park. And if you've seen the videos, they're pretty scary. And we're already hard at work looking at the Pemberwick Park issue. And I spoke with Jim and Amy yesterday and filled me in on where the project is to widen the river over on the Pulse Road area, which is a few years out because of all the different entities involved there, New York Department of Transportation, Connecticut DOT, the Town of Greenwich, Village of Porchester, Westchester County, and the Army Corps of Engineers. So I know Jim has a meeting today, I think, at 2:00. And I'm certainly ready to step in whenever and wherever possible to help facilitate and get the other leaders and other jurisdictions to speed this up because it's, no one should go to bed at night when it's raining and afraid to wake up to see what they're going to look at in the morning. The website will be up, as I said. We did put out some dumpsters. We only had three left because they were all being used. They filled up pretty quickly. We had street sweepers out there. I'm getting calls and emails from people throughout the town who are working to get everybody up and running. Still, we haven't gotten to everything yet, but we've seen collapses in bridges, roads, front yards, so, and lots of, lots of loss of, lots of vehicles were lost in this flood. So we are working on all that, but we are looking at also the money that's coming in from the COVID money. We already have some of that and, or half of that. And we don't know what we're getting yet from the infrastructure bill. The congressman's office said that we'll know in maybe mid-September, so it's coming up, hopefully. But we're really going to have to try and use some of this money to address these problems. And each area of town, I could tell you, is different. There may be different solutions. Not one of them is inexpensive, but I think it's, I firmly believe it's our job to make sure that we mitigate these problems. Even if they're, like in Pemberwick, you know, an 80- or 90-year problem, it's our duty to do what we can do. And so we'll be, I'll be pushing for that money, a lot of that money to be going towards mitigation efforts so that we don't have to always go through this. And in some cases, we're looking real hard at, you know, some houses where they're in low-lying areas if anything can be done. And I've visited those areas and I've spoken with, and I'm still in contact with a lot of the residents. So, you know, all I can say is we're, you know, hang in there. We're with you. We'll be out, again, working all weekend. We're trying to organize some cleanups in different parts of town where the people can help their neighbors. And I also want to say that I saw some great acts of neighborly actions over the weekend where people were checking on their neighbors and bringing them food and helping them clean up. So that was, that was great to see. So more on that, but we should have the website up and running shortly, maybe later today or tomorrow. And with that, I just want to mention that the, we did have some events, we're having events back up and running again. We had the town party last week. I want to thank the organizers for really doing a good job about safety and protocols. On the 19th, we have the Greenwich Police Department Parade. That's going to be a big one. Lots of planning has been going into that for over a year. And then, of course, we have Adopt a Dog on the 26th. These events are outside, so we should be good to go. The COVID numbers for this morning, eight COVID-positive patients in the hospital, one is intubated. All were unvaccinated except for one. So only one was vaccinated out of the eight. And system-wide, we have 132 patients in the Yoldenhaven system. So we're, the numbers are flatlining, which is good. They're staying, they're staying steady. That's what the governor had told me a few weeks ago when they put their mask requirements in place, that it flattened out, as did Mayor Martin in Stanford, and our numbers have. With that said, we're still, you know, keeping our eye on the ball and making sure that people stay safe and hopeful that this thing is going through pretty quickly and hopefully we'll be on the other side of it soon. So with that, rather lengthy report, but I will turn it over to Selectwoman Raven.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone, and certainly echo your thoughts and our hearts go out to everyone that was affected by Ida. One of the things that I've seen on Facebook, there's two Facebook groups. One is Pay It Forward and the other one is Greenwich Connections. And I know a lot of people are monitoring that and being able to sort of connect, you know, need with donations, but it would be a great idea if we could organize something more specific because I know that there's a lot of people that are, you know, willing to help out if we could just match what some of the needs are. And then certainly, I've seen, you know, some of the Boy Scout troops, Girl Scout troops or high school students, middle school students that might need community service hours if there's a way to help, you know, organize those efforts as well. I've been getting a lot of questions about the FEMA response. So I was talking to Jim Michael a little bit and you've alluded to it, what needs to happen, you know, at the state level. So if we could get that information out, you know, the folks that are from the paper, if you can help us get that information out, because I know not everybody looks at the community connections, Fred, that you send out on Friday. Two ceremonies that are also coming up, we've had questions about whether we were going to do a 9/11 ceremony, given it's the 20th anniversary, at Town Hall. We have the one at Glenville Fire Department, which is actually on Friday, September 10th at 6:00 PM, and then the one at the Cosco Park Memorial, which is on Saturday, September 11th at 8:46 is the start of it. And then there's one at Christ Church at 11:00. So if folks want to participate in those ceremonies, that's where they will be at. I think once Cosco Park was established, the memorial there, we stopped doing it at Town Hall because it was essentially in large enough space to accommodate all of us who care so deeply about, you know, remembering what happened that day. On a very boring note, for Reimagine Greenwich, we started to talk about, just like there's townwide cleanups, the coastal cleanup on September 18th, could we do and schedule and work with Greenwich Green and Clean to do business district cleanups? So that's one of the things that we're trying to organize for the fall. And that's my update.
Thank you, Lauren. And yes, for the people who don't have internet service or computer, we're going to print out the instructions and all the information for FEMA. We're going to start reaching out to the, we already have, to some of the neighborhood associations to help us get those, the information out to people. So thank you for mentioning that. And then we have Selectperson Oberlander. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Fred, and thank you, Lauren. And I also extend my help to people affected by the recent flooding and rains. I also grew up in a house that flooded with great regularity, unfortunately, and remember the discomfort and an impact, not just from the flood, but the ongoing impact of the water, actually. So if there's a way that we can help, please reach out. On that note, and similar to a number of these conversations, it's so important to be prepared in advance for these kinds of events, not just governmentally by investment in our infrastructure, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, but also being ready for both natural and man-made disasters. And I've been working very closely with the Red Cross. This is, September is Emergency Preparedness Month, and I certainly know that we could all use a little bit of both a reminder, given that it's also the anniversary of September 11th. Many of you, the older ones of us, remember the Go Bag Ready after 9/11, and the younger ones maybe need a primer. So on October 5th, I'll be co-hosting with the American Red Cross New York Chapter and a number of our local agencies, a panel discussion on being Red Cross-ready and emergency preparedness. And it'll be on October 5th from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And I'm so grateful to the community partners who have agreed to co-sponsor the YMCA, the YWCA, Family Centers, and the Commission on Aging and Growing. I have reached out to a couple of other organizations. This panel discussion will be primarily for adults, and we'll be following it up with a, hopefully, one in Spanish, and then an additional one directed at children as well. So stay tuned for that. We'll start publicizing it in about a week or two. And so that's that on the Red Cross on being ready. On infrastructure, again, some people call our unallocated reserve funds a rainy day fund. I highly encourage the first selectmen to, in addition to whatever funds we may receive going forward on infrastructure and COVID response, that we do have an unprecedented and high level of reserve funds right now, rainy day funds. The last year in terms of the budget numbers was, were, is actually pretty good to Greenwich. So I encourage looking at immediate usage to actually accomplish some of the projects that we've put off for way too long and could help in the future reinforce our resiliency and our ability to withstand these kinds of natural and foreseeable and unforeseeable disasters. So we'll be continuing that conversation, I hope. A couple more things. Sustainability Committee is starting up again after a summer break. We have a meeting tomorrow, 11:00 to 12:30. The Zoom information is posted on the website if you'd like to join. Again, some of the work that we're doing in partnership with local residents and agencies and also town government will help prepare going forward for some of these extreme weather events that we're seeing as a result of our human practices. So I encourage you to come out and learn a little bit more about what the Sustainability Committee is doing. And on that note, a subset of town residents, Pedal Greenwich, is hosting a Community Bike Fest on Saturday, September 25th, from 10:00 AM to 12:30. And it is located, we'll be doing it at 38 West End Avenue, the Living Hope Community Church, with, again, a number of community cosponsors to really build our bike-friendly community and learn about options for safe cycling in our community and further develop our network. So I encourage all residents to come out for the Community Bike Fest as well. And lastly, these last couple of weeks has seen a return to school for many of our children and the teachers in the community, school administrators. As a parent, I can tell you that in-person, there's no substitute for in-person education for not only learning but for social and emotional health of our children. I want to thank all of our educators and our school administrators, parents, for bringing their children to school, showing up every day, and actually, I consider it the most important work that we are doing right now. So thank you for that, and I hope everybody's start of school went well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. And I have it somewhere in my office. What time does the Pedal Greenwich event start on the 25th?
It starts at 10:00 AM, runs till 12:30.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody. With that, we'll go on to old business. There's one item, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. And I believe we have Nicole Sullivan of WestCOG and Victoria Vitry here of SLR Consulting. Okay, as we wait for Victoria and Nicole to join us.
Hi. Sorry, can you hear me right now? This is Nicole from WestCOG.
Hey, Nicole. Yes, we hear you loud and clear.
Hi. Yes, great, thank you. Yeah, so we're back to speak about the potential adoption for the Town of Greenwich for the Hazard Mitigation Plan and answer any following questions you may have at this time.
Sure. Jill?
Thank you, Nicole. Oh, sorry, Jill Oberlander speaking. So at the last meeting, we had not yet seen the plan, and so I don't think we actually even went through a description of what it is and where Greenwich falls in that. And I was hoping, Nicole, that perhaps you could do that, or I don't see, I know Jim Michael participated in some of the meetings, but I don't see anyone here otherwise to present. Fred, who is, who is from the town responsible for the presentation on this item?
Is this, are you referring to the email we're talking about, Dan Marzola?
The, yes. Well, who will, who will replace Dan Marzola?
So right now-
And who will be responsible for sort of presenting the item and following it through?
Sure. Right now, Chief Heavey is the acting, but we're looking to appoint an interim and then post the position. So that should be hopefully coming soon. Right now, it's Chief Heavey and he's been working hard at it. So it's kind of fluid right now. It's not one person that's going to be put down long-term there.
So it's your expectation that the successor to the emergency management position will be the local coordinator or the, I have to look at the terminology.
Municipal coordinator.
Municipal coordinator for, for this effort. Okay. So Nicole, perhaps just for the public, and maybe you could walk through the process and how we are here with this updated hazard mitigation plan. And then I do have a couple of questions about the content of the Greenwich Plan. I would like to propose a, an amendment to the proposed resolution and also an update to the action update.
Sure. And I believe Victoria is also on the line as well to answer any technical questions, but I'll jump right in. So Hazard Mitigation Plan is a requirement to access resiliency grant funding through FEMA. This is, WestCOG received funding to carry out the Hazard Mitigation Plan for our 18 municipalities in which Greenwich is included. Greenwich was part of the SWRPA update in 2016, so the Town of Greenwich has been involved in hazard mitigation plans in the past because it is a requirement to access those grant funds through FEMA, as I just relayed. WestCOG contracted with the consultant, SLR, and that is where Victoria is from, up in the line, and they helped us carry out this regional plan, this regional update of the HMP. So this was the first time that WestCOG was able to get all of our 18 municipalities into one regional plan. In the beginning and throughout this process, WestCOG went with Greenwich municipal staff, such as the late Dan Marzola, to go over the critical facilities, the natural hazards, and any new actions for the town. WestCOG conducted thorough public outreach, which included language translation and closed captioning for, we had even an online video that members of the public could review on our website to learn more about this process. And we also received and incorporated comments from municipal staff across the region and any members of the public. These reviews and rounds of edits have successfully led to the FEMA approval, which we currently have, so a big thank you to everyone involved. I know this was a really hard past couple of years, especially with COVID, so we really appreciate everyone's participation. So this leaves the final step of municipal adoption for, individually for the Town of Greenwich. We have had several other municipalities in the WestCOG region adopt this plan. And to briefly go over the HMP, it's a very large document, so I'll just describe each section. The multi-jurisdictional section, that has the background on all the information for the region as a whole, the different hazard types, the plan development, the updated schedules. And then throughout the document, there are one-page fact sheets that can be pulled out to provide easily accessible information with members of the public or any key decision-makers. The appendices has a great deal of background information, such as the meeting notes from the public meetings, exposure analysis, information, a lot of technical information there with data, as well as more administrative information. And then for the Greenwich Annex, that's the community-specific information. And that brings up risks and risk areas, municipal capabilities, progress that's been made in hazard mitigation for the town over time, and any new actions recommended for the upcoming five years. This would be the primary document that the town uses to guide future actions and grant applications through FEMA. And then finally, it's important to note that these projects and programs are not mandates by any means. They're actions suggested in the future that could be taken up if funding allows for the town. And adopting the plan will continue to make the town eligible for FEMA grant opportunities such as Flood Mitigation Assistance, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and the Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities, also known as BRIC. And those are the three main grant programs that you'd be eligible for if adopting the plan. And the HMGP grant cycle is currently open, so letters of interest can be submitted to DEMIS currently. And the BRIC application cycle will be open in the fall. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions along with Victoria.
Do you have it?
No question.
I see, you know, dam failure as one of the possible things that we would be able to, you know, mitigate and to reach out for reimbursement. Typically with dams, there's always a, there usually is a ownership issue. Have you come across that in the past in other municipalities, other areas, where there may be a dam failure, but there's an issue of ownership there? And how, if you did, how did you handle that? Because we are looking at that right now here in our town, and it just jumped out at me when I saw it.
Yeah. That's a really great question. I'm going to defer that one to Victoria because that gets a little more technical, but I will say there is a difference between private and public ownership, as I'm sure you realize, and that can play a part in what the town is able to facilitate and move forward with. But Victoria, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, of course. Hello, can you hear me okay?
A little bit, a little bit muffled, Victoria.
Okay. Sit a little closer. Is that a little better?
Yes, better. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, yeah, of course. Yeah, I think a lot of the municipalities that we work with find dams to be some of the more challenging issues. So most often, you know, it kind of, so first off, you know, all dams in the state are regulated by DEEP. So at the end of the day, you know, DEEP is kind of the overseer of all dams regardless of size. So the towns that we talk with that usually have the issues with ownership, a lot of their actions and strategies are really just, you know, A, working with, working with those owners, working with those who, you know, have dams on the property, just to help them identify what the issues are and what the challenges are, right, starting from the beginning. The town can work with the owner and can work with DEEP to help ensure compliance on these dams. And then sometimes, you know, some municipalities, towns, cities, whatever it is, sponsor grants to help improve these private dams. So there's a, there's a few different avenues that can be taken, I guess, depending on, you know, the issue at hand. So like you mentioned, it's ownership, so oftentimes it's just, you know, an action or a strategy is really just working with those surrounding the dam to identify ownership, and then again, working with DEEP to help bring those dams up into compliance and really evaluating and assessing what those dams need. So you're not the only one that struggles and has these issues, and there's, like I said, a couple of different avenues that can be taken. But oftentimes, it's those actions built into the plan surrounding just identifying and working with owners to bring dams into compliance. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, and it's a, I know it's a more complicated one. I just wanted to get your take on it and any experience you may have had with that. But no, I appreciate that. I don't have any more questions. Selectperson Oberlander, you have the floor.
Thank you, Fred. And this is Jill Oberlander. Thank you, Nicole, for the explanation. Just for the members of the public who are curious about the WestCOG plan and the Greenwich section, there is an index in, for both the plan and for the appendices. And if you, if you click on the various tabs, you will see Greenwich notes reflected, and you could click on that, and it'll take you right to the section with Greenwich notes. Just to clarify, the way I understand it, when we approve or vote on the resolution, what we're adopting is not just the mitigation plan that WestCOG has put forward for all of the covered communities, but also the specifics of the Greenwich Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, which is included within the Greenwich notes. Is that, is my understanding correct?
Yes, I would say that's correct, Victoria. Can you confirm that?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. And to that end, I had a couple of concerns about the mitigation plan update as it stands, and I'll run through those. One had to do, and the resolution, one had to do with the public participation part of it. I recognize that WestCOG is dealing with a number of localities. Last year was a unique year in terms of COVID and outreach, but I'm concerned that, I couldn't recall receiving a notice on the Greenwich session to review the plan. I haven't found one yet in my email. I've been trying to search it to find the notice. And so I'm a little concerned that, that we didn't get the input that we might have otherwise gotten had we been operating normally. So what I, what I'd like to suggest to my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen, and I had this conversation with one of your colleagues yesterday, is that we use, you know, we don't delay because we need to adopt a plan to apply for funding. The existing plan's expired, but we use the next year to really actually do some public outreach to make sure people are aware, especially given the recent events, and get people's input, including throughout Town Hall, on what the, what the plan provides. And I understand that WestCOG is supportive of whatever means we can use to expand public participation in this process. So that's my first comment and concern, and I hope my colleagues will agree. And the second has to do with the specifics of the plan update, which might have come up had there been greater participation. The one that I was focused on had to do with the Northwest Fire, but I think- The one that I was focused on had to do with the Northwest Fire, but I think actually, hearing your comment, Fred, on dams, we actually would probably want to revisit both. The plan update, as it's included in the notes, has dropped the Northwest Fire Protection from, a plan for a firehouse in Northwest Greenwich, from our, the Greenwich-specific Hazard Mitigation Plan. And the notes indicate that the town has determined that the cost-benefit ratio of this action does not warrant its implementation. And I don't agree with that statement, and I don't think that it's reflective of the community-wide perception of fire response needs. I don't believe it's consistent with the recent fire study performed by Matrix. And I'd like to propose that, to the Board of Selectmen, that we amend the mitigation plan update at our, we vote to do it now, and it, we can effectuate it, as I understand, I think from Nicole, your email, through, I can't remember what it's called, but some kind of amendment process-
Sure.
-so that we can include that as an ongoing dialogue in our community. And to add to that, this plan update also reflects that we dropped the dam discussion, and given your comment there, I am going to suggest that maybe we don't want to drop that and include that as a continuing discussion as well. So, that is my, those are my two proposals right now on the plan, and then I have a modification to the resolution as well. But I opened that up to discussion. I hope that you will agree that Northwest Fire is still an important part of the conversation.
Thank you very much, Jill. Yeah, it's something that the Fire Administration and OFS, the Office of First Selectmen, is working on. And you're right, it is a continuing conversation, so it should be in there, as should the dam. So, I would certainly take your amendment.
So, I'm going to make a proposal that, or unless, Lauren, you want to do the proposal, and I'll do the second. It's up to you.
No, but I want to know, what, do we have to be very specific on the words? Because we got hung up on that our last meeting.
That will be a question for Nicole. How specific, or for SLR, how specific do we need to be to amend the plan update?
Well, I'll jump in now. Technically, it's not an amendment because FEMA has already approved the plan as is. So, the town has the option to adopt the plan contingent upon an errata page, which is a correction of the approved text. So, that would be a supplementary document that the town would have. In a sense, it's like an amendment, but instead, it's a correction instead of an addition.
Okay. So, is the proposal that, does the proposal come when we adopt the plan, or do we first consider whether there's an agreement on these, including these two? When do you need the, how do we need to approve the errata for your purposes?
You know, in that case, I'll leave up to the town whether you would like to confirm what exactly the errata entails before adopting the plan. Either way, it just would be plan adoption contingent upon the errata. It's E-R-R-A-T-A. It's a new word for me.
So, yeah, I think that's simple if we do it without having to define the corrections, but we're going to adopt the plan contingent on a future errata page with supplementary corrections.
Yeah, I would like the actual correction on the Northwest Fire to be included in our proposal, actually, today.
And I would also like the-
The dams, yeah.
But do we have the specific words, or we could just say?
I can jump, I can jump in quickly just to let you know the specifics. So, what the errata sheet would typically do is really just know, you know, which page and which text we're changing. So, I think, seeing as we've had the actions in the past, and, you know, so technically, they've been dropped since the previous plan, what we can simply do is correct that these actions were dropped from the approved FEMA document, but we're correcting those to actually indicate that they be carried forward. So, it doesn't necessarily mean we need to go into depth into identifying or, you know, kind of reconfiguring these actions or strategies. I think it might be a simple indication of it was an error and we want to carry these forward versus dropping those actions. So, just as a, you know, if we wanted to incorporate some more specific comments into the errata, but I think the main goal is to really just clarify that we're not dropping these actions, and in fact, we'll be carrying them forward for the town, just to give you that note.
Okay. So, the language, thank you, Jill Oberlander, again. The language when we approve it would be that we, and I'm going to make a modification of the resolution as well, but that we condition approval on the adoption of our errata that carries forward items, damn one is, which one? Items four and 29, respectively, dealing with dams and Northwest, a firehouse, plan for a firehouse in Northwest Greenwich, instead of a drop status. Is that, is that clear enough, Lauren?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And then, in terms of the resolution, to clarify a question that I raised last time, I'd like to propose that we amend the resolution that's included in the WestCOG materials. The resolved section, item four, that we add the following language at the beginning. "A municipal coordinator," initial cap M, initial cap C, "will be appointed who shall be responsible for tracking progress on the initial cap plan," period. "The municipal coordinator," initial cap M, initial cap C, "shall prepare and present a annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan to the Board of Selectmen," period, instead of the existing language. So, I make that proposal now, looking for a second in a vote.
Second. Lauren Raven, I second that amendment to the resolution.
Resolution, item four. And all those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Yes, and I'll send that language to, if I can figure out how to share this, to Barbara and to everyone. Okay. I have no other questions or comments. Thank you, Nicole, for the explanation, and SLR. Victoria?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you both for that. Appreciate it, the clarifications and working with us on this Hazard Mitigation Plan. With that, with all the, with the amendment and the proposal to keep the two items from being dropped before, do we have a motion to accept the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we accept the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update with the resolution as amended and the plan adoption as amended to include the items four and 29 for the dam and Northwest Fire Station that were previously dropped.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay. Nicole and Victoria, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great day. Okay, new business, we have one item, which is an amendment to Traffic Ordinance Schedule 1, Indian Harbor Drive, Town Project 21 to 24. We have Deputy Chief Craig Gray and Deputy Commissioner of DPW, Jim Michael, here to present.
Thank you. As part of just doing everyday operations, we received a complaint through Public Works of site distances coming out of a driveway along Indian Harbor Drive. This occurred probably a year and a half ago, and we've been looking at alternatives to that. We've been working with some of the property owners in this stretch, and we've looked into doing some minor widening of Indian Harbor Drive from Museum Drive down to Orchard Place to accommodate allowing parking to remain on the road, but also to allow two safe travel lanes, a northbound and a southbound lane. Currently, the road is about 26 to 28 feet in width. Parking is currently allowed on one side of the road. Once you have a car parked there, you don't really have two safe travel lanes, and we actually create somewhat of a, a little bit of a more unsafe condition than what we currently have. So, we are looking to widen the road out a little bit in this stretch and move the parking to the opposite side of the road. By doing that, what that does, and that's going to be on the Bruce Park Playground side of the road, it allows all those vehicles that come out of those driveways to not have cars parked right where they're pulling out of their driveways, which opens up the visibility for them. In addition, it gives them approximately 10 more parking space equivalents. We're not going to stripe out parking spaces. They're not metered stalls over there. It's just kind of like free on-street parking in that stretch for those residents and possibly some overflow if need be for the park. But with all the driveways there, you lose parking if you're on the driveway side, but now there's no driveways on the side that we're proposing to move the parking to. So, it actually picks us up an additional 10 parking stalls over there. And so, hopefully, the residents and, you know, it also helps with parks for their overflow if they have a large event at the playground or whatever. So, that's the basis behind all this. If this is approved, the parking ordinance change, we're asking for it now, but it won't go into effect until the construction's done. But we are looking to try and do this construction this fall, so.
Thank you, Jim. Have all the neighbors in Orchard Place and that area there and Museum Drive in Indian Harbor, have they been contacted?
So, we've sent out notices for them, and we have not, as far as, Public Works hasn't received any responses. I'm not sure. I think Luanne's on the call here, too. I don't believe. I talked to Deputy Chief Gray. He said he hasn't received any specific negative feedback on it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
One question. When did you reach out to the neighbors? When were the neighbors contacted?
It's been a couple weeks since we sent the notices out, so I don't know the exact date. I know it's been a few weeks, but.
And was it done by mail, through the mailbox?
It was through mailings.
Through mailings. I'm just wondering about whether people were away end of summer, start of school, you know, whether, you know, whether there's a need for, there aren't, I mean, I don't, how many homes are impacted?
I think there's only about 10 homes in the stretch, something like that, so.
And that includes the condominiums?
Yeah, I think a couple of those are, I was going to say, there's probably 10 parcels with probably a few more home, you know, home units, so to speak, but.
Yeah, I think, no, I would assume they would be in favor of it. Aesthetically, I mean, how much did it cut into the park, did you say?
It's only cutting about four to five feet or so. Another piece that we are doing is we're going to add a little section of sidewalk that would go along that same stretch. So, currently, you have sidewalk running from the main part of Bruce Park down along Davis Avenue, along Indian Harbor Drive, and then it kind of curls around towards Bruce Museum, and then up towards the playground this way. You'll also be able to cross Museum Drive and continue on the sidewalk down to, and then be able to go in through the back, kind of, we call the, kind of the back door to the playground park as well. So, it adds a little sidewalk connectivity, allows people to be able to get out and walk a little bit and so forth, so.
Thank you, Jim. Right. Is there a motion to approve this amendment to the traffic ordinance?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the amendment to the traffic ordinance schedule for Indian Harbor Drive Project 21-24.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Okay. With that, do we have any appointments or nominations? Okay. Is there, seeing other businesses, are there a motion for adjournment?
Lauren Raven, so moved. Jill Oberlander, second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Jenny. Have a great day.